I want to call the order of the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for February the 24th, 2025. We'll ask that everyone please stand and we will have our prayer and our pledge of allegiance. Most gracious heavenly father, we're so thankful for the day that you've given us, for the sunshine we've enjoyed and the opportunity to live in a county such as Rutherford County. Father, we ask that you be with us as we go about dealing with the county business, as we deal with the planning for Rutherford County and continue to watch over it as far as things are happening across this county. Father, we ask that you give us guidance and give us direction and be with us all. We ask that you look after the people of this county, that you protect them and watch after them too. Father, be with us. We offer this prayer in your son's holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Good morning. Good to see each and every one of you here this morning. We'll now have the roll call and the termination of quorum. Madam Secretary?
Jim Everwater.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Michael Shirley.
Here.
Jason Beavers.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I'll have the approval of our minutes for February the 10th, 2025, and I'll call on our vice chairman, Lee Bogle.
The minutes for the February 10th meeting have been reviewed and in good order, therefore I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes have been approved. Any public comments?
No, sir. No one signed up for public comments.
Public comments? Will items withdrawn or deferred?
None, sir. The agenda is correct as it's printed.
All right. We'll move then into our new business. Before we get into that, I want to say welcome to our new member. We've got Jason Beavers over here, just appointed. We've got him over here in that corner over there, got him under the spotlight this morning, so we're glad to have you with us, Jason. We really appreciate you being, taking the time out of your heavy schedule to be a part in serving the people of Rutherford County. Glad you're a part of this. We'll move into our new business, which is item seven, a letter A submitted for preliminary plan approval. Number one is Burgess Farms, 241004, 633 lots, 605 buildable on 713 acres, zoned RM/RL, located along Panther Creek Road, Midland Road, Oak Grove Road, and Carlton Road. Burgess property, LSC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and good morning, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well this Monday morning. As you stated, this property is Burgess Farms. The applicant is proposing to develop this property into approximately 633 lots. There's about four separate, well, yeah, four separate tracks that go along with this for over 713 acres. These lots are all sized appropriately for their zoning district. As you stated during the introduction, Mr. Chairman, there is a portion, most of the site zoned RM, but there is a decent sized portion of it also zoned RL, which would require the acre lots. So we are seeing the 15,000 square foot minimum lots in the RM and also the one acre lots in the RL zone. So this is not a rezoning application. This is a conventionally zoned development. There's a total of 522 RM zoned lots, 84 RL zoned lots. The remaining lots are open space and step lots. The applicants also propose to dedicate a lot to the county for use as a public health and safety building or similar type use. We've gone through the review of this particular plan numerous times and have had multiple conversations with the applicant's development team. Of course, as you might expect, traffic improvements in this area have been a particular concern of ours and of the development team as well. So there was a traffic study that was commissioned for this and it was presented to staff. At that time, staff is in the process of bringing on our third party, traffic consultant, Neil Schaefer. Greg Judy with Neil Schaefer is present for any questions or discussion that may be had as well. After we first looked at the traffic study, there were some changes we felt needed to be made. We sent that back to the applicant team. They did make those changes and then resubmitted the study. I'm going to not get into the particulars right now of the traffic study itself as far as its results and recommendations, but there on your table you will have 11 by 17 sheet, looks like this, Burgess Farm off-site improvements. This was put together by the development team. This kind of goes through the improvements as well as the potential cost share here that they are proposing. I will let the development team kind of give you their presentation on that and kind of what their ask is. This is a lot of information, just to be forewarned on that. I do expect a lot of discussion on this. But with that, from a, just looking at it from a, just looking at our, just our normal planning standards and engineering standards, I'm sure there'll be some tweaks here and there that need to be made, especially when it comes to the construction drawings and things like that. But from a planning standpoint, it seems that they've met the requirements of the zoning ordinance and also the subdivision regulations. However, this is a big piece of that, these traffic improvements that we're going to be discussing. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and I'm sure Mike will too.
Mister's, questions, comments for staff? Not having any questions from the commissioners then, we'll move right into asking that the development team come forward and make their presentation this time. Ernie Brick Murphy?
Good morning, members of planning commission and staff. I'm Brick Murphy of the law firm of Murphy Goodman and Rosado, and I represent the applicant, Mr. Mayor Ernest Burgess and his family. They've submitted this application for preliminary plan. We've worked the past several months with staff on this in conjunction with the original application back in August. Mr. Jamie Reed with SCC and I went through all the requirements for preliminary plan approval and I prepared a letter that detailed the ordinance's requirements in your subdivision regulations and how this application met all those requirements. This is a rare opportunity to plan 713 acres all at once. There is a huge benefit to that in that, you know, we can plan roadway intersections, we can plan onsite traffic mitigation, we can plan for utility development in a way that is different than bringing in 20 or 30 acres at a time and plan for the future. It's a big piece of property. It's going to be developed over time, but this gives us a plan and you a plan to do that. One of the things that was also discussed by Mr. Demossi is the traffic study that was commissioned. The traffic study was asked to identify a couple of intersections and how this development might affect them. Once again, you know, the applicant has gone above and beyond what the preliminary plan would require and has worked collaboratively with the county to create a framework for off-site improvements. You know, every development in this community has some impact on the road systems, on intersections, et cetera, but typically you guys don't require developers to make improvements to off-site intersections. However, in this case, we want to work with the county. We've heard the need for infrastructure contributions from developers and we want to help. So I've worked with Mr. Christensen and staff on this framework. One of the tables has a column that a couple of numbers need to be changed around from a zero to 100, but that being said, we're going to work collaboratively with staff and the planning commission on this. And this framework will need to be submitted, you know, to Nick's office for the creation of an agreement. Nick may be able to comment a little bit more on what steps would need to be taken, but there will be additional steps and additional approvals for any development agreement with these intersections. But that being said, Mayor Burgess and his team were committed to continuing that process. We would just ask that the planning commission approve the project based on the preliminary plan requirements with the understanding that we'll come back and work with staff and Mr. Christensen's office on that off-site development agreement. So I appreciate it. Mr. Jamie Reed with SCC is going to walk you through some specifics for the plan. He's the applicant's engineer and the team will be here to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jamie Reed?
That's right. Thank you. I'm Jamie Reed with SCC with two Es with Reed, like reverse that. Anyhow, good morning, everybody. I would just like to state also that I'm very thankful that I got the privilege to work with Ernest Burgess on this project in my firm, so I just feel blessed. It's been, I've been doing this for 30 something years and kept to work with one of our favorite mayor's here projects. Anyhow, I want to throw that in there. But anyhow, we've been working on this, like Brick said, for several months now coordinating this project, the ins and outs of it, off-site traffic improvements and stuff like that. I'll just kind of reiterate some stuff that Doug and everybody said, then I'll go in over the book and stuff like that and see if y'all have any questions. But with this, like Doug said, we basically have 607 buildable lots on the 713 acres. We're dedicating one EMS lot, I think it's, excuse me, 3.21 acres. Then we've got a breakdown of several different, three different type of sizes of lots, 15,000 one acre and five acre, two little bit larger lots. So we've got 522 RM lots that are 15,000, 84 RL lots that are one to five acres, eight CUD wastewater lots. And with that, we have an additional capacity in the step system on this too to handle that plus additional lands around through there for other developments. Anyhow, with this, even though it's a straight zoning project, we have 20 open space lots on this development. And like I said earlier, this is, this kind of gives us three price points on this development. I know it's a large project, 700 acres, but we've got small, medium, and large lots for the variety of price points. In addition to that, we have a large amenity center in the dead center of the project. I don't know if you, if you've opened up the book and seen the plat, but we've got a large amenity place, of course, where you'll have your, you know, your post office pickup from mail and stuff like that, but for this development, even though it's not required for a large development like it, it's a straight zoning. We've thrown that in the middle of the mix also. But with that, I'd like to ask if there's any questions on the preliminary plat itself yet before I kind of dive into the off-site improvement booklets. Does any?
I'm glad you paused because I wrote something down. You said that you had some CUD wastewater lots and then you said something about extra space for other developments?
What I meant by that capacity wise, so for instance, and Jason is here with CUD, but I've got, if you look at the math on the cover sheet, I think I've got, what I'm required is 41 acres basically to handle the 600 something lots I've got. Well, I've got 61 acres. So I've got 20, what I'm saying is I've got 20 extra acres to handle additional sort of land around through there. So the capacity for the step system is well above this. I know Jason and I'll go back within designs with different loading rates and stuff, but we do have extra soils is what I meant. I'm not like right on the niche of barely getting 600 something lots. So we've got extra capacity is what I want to emphasize. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments or? Jeff, you look like you might have.
Probably get into it, Jamie, but this will be run by a pretty long process. Will that be just one HOA or will it be more than that?
Who knows? Like it could be one, it could be two or three. I don't know how we'll split it and who will end up, you know, eventually buying this and splitting it up, how they will develop it one at a time. There may be, like you said, one region over there that's kind of self-sustained on that one side and may be an HOA and be a different price point. Then you may have one in the middle and then you may have the largest state slots in a different, you know what I mean? So I don't, I don't know. I know it'll be an HOA because we'll have detention ponds and open spaces to maintain. I just don't know if it'll be one or three. Sorry. Yeah. Jeff? I'm sorry.
Jamie, I want to make sure all these are individually owned. No rental properties are planned in this area?
To my knowledge, yeah, that's correct. No rental properties, just build or sell.
Where is the ESM lot? Are you able to identify where that?
It's, it is owned, if you look, it's, let me pull the master plan here. I got it right here. It's on the far right-hand side of the development by the five acre tracks. And we met with that group, EMS group, and that's the, that's the area that they needed to sustain their, their region to keep their, what do you call it Doug, their rates, their ratio, their, yeah, ratings. So we, they picked that spot and that's the one. It worked out great for us too, so I think it's 3.2 acres on that. Is there any other questions? If not, I'll try to flip through this. Gerald, our traffic engineer is sick. He got the flu. Y'all haven't heard that lately, have you? So, but unfortunately he's got the flu and I'm going to do the best I can and kind of go through this booklet of what he said and what we have come up with. Basically, in a nutshell, from, I'm not the traffic engineer, but I'll do, try to lay it in layman's terms like I understand it. Trip, we count the trips in certain areas. So if the traffic generated in one area, let's just say it's this intersection is 100 cars a day, then it goes up. We do our development and it's 120 cars. We take that difference in percentages for AM and PM and we've kind of put that together as a fair and judgment call for everything. So that's how we studied all those intersections around the side and away from the site. So I'll just flip through this real quick if, and then y'all just ask me questions as we go. Sheet C 0.1, excuse me, kind of describes, shows the development and it shows all the, I call the little nodal points, kind of traffic terms, but all the red ones are all 100% access to our development. We have to pay for all those improvements. The blue is somewhat percentage wise that we've kind of broke down, which are mostly off-site. So you'll see there's a handful of those. I think there's, I think there's three if I'm not mistaken, right guys? Three of those. So you flip sheet C 1.0 is improvements on of the developments, sheets eight and nine, which are part of the development that we pay 100%. Then you flip on the one that's kind of been somewhat larger for us that, which is the Jones property over there on Panther Creek Road, Barfield Crescent Road. We have been in conjunction with the design team, the county and comments on this area and we have actually been in contact with the Jones family to purchase the right of way to help move that intersection over. But if you see the green highlight I've got on there, that's property that needs to be acquired and are bought and or somehow gotten so we can do the improvements that's required in the traffic reports. But what we have done up to this point, as we've gotten with Jones family and are currently, you know, working out right of way acquisition in that area. And then if you flip over to sheet 1.2, kind of very similar, show the green areas of highlight of areas of acquisition. See, the issue that we've run into a lot of these areas is a lot of the deeds call for the center line of the road. So, you know, it's, it's hard to do anything with, you've got a prescriptive easement that you only can do what's there. You can't go past that to improve then and improve the roads. So what we've done is we've looked at what we've got to buy, what's got to be deed in, and then our improvements associated with that too. So that's what you see in most of these sheets. So if you flip through all these, then you get to the, I call the nuts and bolts of it on sheets two and 2.1. On top of, on top of this preliminary booklet, I'm going to call this a preliminary booklet because we don't have construction plans for these intersections. We've got preliminary plans drawn up. We don't have topo associated with it. So what we, what we did do is we sent these to contractors and got prices on it, price per, for pavement, prices for, you know, did stuff like it's preliminary wise. So we created tables for all the intersections and that's how we calibrated our money of what we think percentage wise. So we know roughly what the money is, but then you break to the very last page regardless if we're off, you know, 10,000, 15, 50, whatever. We broke it down in percentages what the county would owe versus the developer would owe on certain intersections of the three, of all of them, there's only three that need to be massaged. So we got with the county last week, the mayor's office and everybody, everybody agreed to certain percentage numbers, so we're all in agreements on those numbers. Now it's just what will that number be, you know, from a full-blown set of construction plans? We've got preliminary numbers, then we, now we know what percentages everybody worked out with. So that's basically this traffic report, how we come to fruition over the past six months. Is there any questions on that? I know I threw a lot at you real quick, but it's, it's basically traffic counts versus pre-imposed and then percentages of improvements for the county versus the developer at each of those intersections. And I think it's a really good, I think we've got a really good starting point for all of us to, not just this project, but for projects from now on, a good template for us to do other projects coming forward for the county. So, but.
Where, where would the schools be? I mean, but these are zone Christiana school?
No, it's Rock Vale.
Rock Vale?
School. All of them, yeah. All of them go to Rock Vale school.
What route would they take to go to the schools?
Pettis, you probably know better than I do.
You've got two, three different routes. Seven, you've got seven openings there, I think?
Yeah.
Seven different ways.
Yeah.
They could take Panther, which would carry them in that direction. They can go down Midland Road, hitting Armstrong Valley.
I think this is the first subdivision we've ever seen.
You're, you're.
Y'all just need them out to figure out where you're going and get up to the point.
That's, yeah, that's correct. You're.
You have to leave the same way you want to go.
That's, that's right. The last ones, this, this reminds me of, Pettis made a good comment, Creek's Bend subdivision and Cascade Falls, if anybody were around back then. 20 years ago, I did that subdivision. They're still working in that subdivision and that had more lots in it than this here combined and each one of those had one entrance. Cascade had one entrance, still does today, till today, one entrance, got 400 something like, and then Creek's Bend on the other side now has got two, but it's, you know, roughly 400 lots. So it's, there's, and that's on the Wilson County line. So, and it's still being developed over 20 years from now, so. But like Pettis said, we've got numerous intersections at this site endeavors to go varieties of different ways. Sorry, Brick.
One thing I wanted to emphasize also is the, the plan that's before you as to these off-site improvements is based on the traffic study. So we didn't just say, well, we might need a turn lane, we might not need a turn lane. I don't know about traffic, you know, what's it going to be in 20 years? It's based off the projected numbers. You know, your third-party traffic engineer vetted it. Our third-party traffic engineer did the study and it's based on projections, it's based on science. It's based on this development's actual projected impact on the future, you know, roadways. And it's also narrowly tailored to, to the, the anticipated impacts and then the requirements for the developer are proportional to, to those impacts. And so if, when the Burgess property is fully developed out, they're, you know, 55% of the south left turns in a particular intersection, they're paying for 55% of that cost for acquisition of that right of way. And so it's, it's both, there's a nexus between the particular development and the off-site improvement requests by the county and the partnership as well as it's proportional. So the developer's not paying 100% if it's not 100% of the impacts and the county's not paying 100% if Mayor Burgess's property is impacting those, those intersections. So we feel like this is a good way to do that. It seems to be a rigorous way based on science and data and experts and we feel like it's something that the county can replicate. And one of the things that we did in the tables at the back was we have columns for things that have nothing in them. For example, slopes and construction easements, because we feel like the, the right-of-way acquisition that Jamie's talking about and, and Gerald, the traffic engineer is projecting, we'd have sufficient space for those things, but we created that table in anticipation that the planning commission and staff might want to use that for future developments, other developments, because every intersection's different, every area of town is different and the county's different. And so y'all may need to have things in those columns on these future agreements, but this is, you know, narrowly tailored to the particular development, the projected impacts, and it's narrowly tailored. And so y'all aren't asking the developer to contribute any more than science is showing that they're going to impact the roadways and they're not asking the county to pay for things that are development-driven. So we feel like that's a good compromise and we've worked collaboratively on this and hopefully it's something that the county can use in future projects and that Jamie and I, when we represent developers can say, this is fair, this is reasonable, this is something you need to do. So I wanted to add that, you know, for lawyer, I've got to talk, you know, so Jamie, I appreciate it.
No, good points. Very good point.
I have a quick question along those lines.
Commissioner, could you use your mic?
Sorry about that. On C 21, number of lots to be built per year for traffic impact, is that a cumulative count there? Like in 2025, we got 60 and then 2034, we got 606.
If we got 633 lots a year. He's, I think he's looking at projection of 60 lots per year. That's if he's doing 60 lots per year on that breakdown.
Gotcha.
And, and like I said, you know, who knows? That's why I was bringing up Cascade and Creek's Bend. I did that over 20 years ago. It had a few, it had a little bit more lots that they're still working in there. Thank you, sir.
But, but the agreement is not phased that way though, so.
It's based on percentage.
Yeah. The, the applicant would be paying for its share of those improvements on the front end. You know, not, you know, when section, you know, three comes online, they pay X, Y, and Z. I mean, the idea is we would front-load it and then that way the county's not having to figure out when the next payment is due or whatever. It'd be on the front end is, is the way it was anticipated.
Yeah. The fair thing that we kept coming up with is percentage breakdowns and how to break that down in the fairest way was the trip generation for proportional numbers that worked out with everybody that you could see, you could actually see that, so.
Mr. Sherman?
On, I'm looking at C 1.1 and 1.2. The areas highlighted in green are the right-of-way acquisition. Are these the only three intersections that you all have identified that right-of-way acquisition?
That's not part of the front of the, yes, there's, it's three that, all the ones that are on our site or that are around our property, we can come into our properties and do that and we've, we've verified that. Now the, the ones where we haven't, like, like you're talking about sheet 1.1, that is the Jones. So we've actually been in conversation with those guys to buy that additional right-of-way to move our, move the right on that one side. So, but I wanted to be, what I wanted to show you guys is that we do need the green to make this work. So if the Joneses family come back and said, hey, we couldn't, we're not going to give you that, well then we'll need help with the county acquiring right-of-way to do that. We're not saying we're not going to do the improvements. We're just saying we need help acquiring the right-of-way to also help us do those improvements.
Have you spoken with the landowners, not, not the Joneses, but the other landowners? Have you approached them about acquiring right-of-way?
No, no. The main one was the Joneses because we, majority of all that could be, we, which we found out this past weekend, yes, we're working with those guys. So if I shift that whole intersection up, they're, most, all that gets up there on to them. And the reason being. And the reason being on, what you don't see on here is on the south side of that road on Midland Road is a is a stream going through there. So when we met last week with the staff, with Sheila and Mike and everybody, they made a point, which we haven't done offsite topo, but they brought up, there's a blue line stream coming there. So we didn't want to do any improvements on that side. So all the improvements are going to the Joneses' side. So all that's going to be moved up and we're not going to sustain anything in the stream or the stream buffers, if that makes sense.
Just to clarify, you haven't spoken with the landowners?
No, sir, not on the, not on the other properties. The main one, the biggest one was the Jones, and we have spoken with them.
Mr. Shirley, in response to your question, I just mouthed to the developer, you know, can we reach out to them? And we will. But, you know, inevitably, there may be somebody who doesn't want to sell or is not in a position to talk or, you know, maybe even we can't get in touch with for whatever reason. And so, you know, we don't want to be caught in the catch 22 of the county needing these improvements to be made, the developer being willing to participate, but not being able to move, move, move the issue forward. And so, you know, Jamie and I work with a lot of the development community and and we need to be able to find a solution to this problem that's collaborative with the county. County needs infrastructure improvements to be made, needs to be able to charge developers for their impacts, but developers can't acquire right of way. And sometimes it's not a, we don't want to, and a lot of times it's not a we don't want to, it's a we can't. So.
And like I said, the the main thing we did on the studies is we researched all the surveys. He did a lot of title searches and everything to find out if there are right of ways to the center of the road or not. So we've done a ton of homework. So we know majority of these are to the center line of the road, unfortunately. And that's what you're going to see regardless of this subdivision, all these, the other subdivision we got left, is this. And we feel that this is a really good template to proceed on all new, you know, projects moving forward with the developers being collaborative with the county and fixing our roads, right?
We searched till the roads, you know, back to when the roads were laid out. And you would think in modern day that there'd be real clear definitions of where things are and where things should be. But you got to remember, you know, some of this stuff was done back when they, you know, laid roads out with chains. Some of it was, you know, great, we're going to put a road through here and everybody was happy it was going to be there, you know? Back then, people were happy if you wanted to build a road and it abutted them vast majority of the time. And they weren't giving the county a hard time or the state a hard time about where it was going to be and how big the shoulders were going to be and and that sort of thing. And so the roads, some places are where they are. But from a legal standpoint, it's hard to know where they are. Does that make sense? So sometimes, you know, we're having to err on the side of caution and say, we don't know that we have the right to extend the roadway there. And so we need the county's help in defining that. And and sometimes that may be, you know, condemnation suit. But, you know, a lot of times we'll be successful in in being able to negotiate with neighbors. But, you know, sometimes you can't.
That's what we'd like to try to, is just when we can't, when people just say absolutely no, and you need to fix these intersections. It's a public health and safety issue and a lot of these intersections, they need to be fixed. And without the county's help, fix, you know, y'all's helped getting that, that, we can't do anything. I mean, we, I can design all you want and we can talk about how good it is until we get that to fix it, we can't, you know. But I think what we've got here and is a great template to move forward with, may take some misogyn with you guys, but I think it's a good, great start. So.
And I will say, these intersections at some point are going to need to be improved. The development is accelerating those needs, but most of the county's roads, particularly in places that are not right at the urban core, are going to need to be improved in either the near future or or the not near future. But development's going to happen. You know, property owners have an entitlement to do something with their property. I know there's a lot of discussion about what the nature of development's going to look like in this community. And Mayor Burgess and his team, which I'm honored to be representing him, listened. I mean, we really did. And what the planning commission and county commission have said they want to see in the future through the preliminary, through the comprehensive plan discussion, we wanted to bring what you've told us you wanted to see. But, you know, we need some help, not just Mayor Burgess, but the development community in general, in helping y'all implement your vision. And sometimes that may be taking the next step and and helping with the with the acquisition of right of way for infrastructure improvements. So.
The question, we passed three minutes, so I'm sorry.
I do. Have you all had preliminary conversations with the state? I know there's state road involved in this, Panther Creek, State Route 269.
Yes, we have. I've been with plan sales, trying to get updated plans where they're saying, they're saying there's no, they cannot quote find any plans. Me and Brick, we beat ourselves to death trying to find survey data for actual right of way and stuff. So we can call it right of way, but the deeds and the title searches he's got, regardless of what T-Dot says, you know, they assume always a 50-foot right of way is what they keep, Stanley keeps telling me at T-Dot. But without.
The deed doesn't say that.
The deed doesn't say that. And the title searches do not say that. So we don't want to emphasize, we're showing worst case scenario, which is deed to the center line of the road.
And some of those, I've run into that before in previous projects. Is there a presumption that the state or the county has maintained that roadway and that center line of roadway really doesn't?
Well, it's.
It's kind of a sticky situation.
Yeah, they, it's more prescriptive easement. What we try, and we tried to go down that avenue a little bit, but the issue with that is is it's there. So whatever is within, whatever maintains that road via the ditches or whatnot, that's with that prescriptive easement typically. But what we have, when we widen it, we go past that, so.
Right, so it's additional purchase of right of way outside of that, but there has to be some sort of latitude there to the actual center line of the road because the property owner hasn't been maintaining.
That's right.
Center line of road to ditch anyway.
That's the argument, that's the argument we would say. So, you know, if that first 20 feet of his right of way has been maintained by the county and the other five or 10 we need to do the, you know, really is not, you're right, that's just something.
We need certainty.
So just for everybody's information, that that there are other elements involved in that when it comes to.
And I would love to find the T-Dot plans. I'm glad you brought that up. I've tried my.
A long time ago, the guy that knew where every single one of those were.
Now they just say it's not up there, they can't find it. That's the, yeah, and it's.
Hard to find those old ones, especially they were hand drawn back then.
Yeah, that's right.
The other question I had, do you see anything project related or in the vicinity vicinity that the traffic study indicated a traffic signal or anything? I know we're talking about a lot of geometric improvements and turn lanes.
No, but there was one, no, that, no, but there was, there was a signal that was just added right on, down south of us. What was that, new traffic?
Rock Springs.
Rock Springs Road. Yeah.
Oh, that one. Okay, just curious of the impact.
No, but no signal, to my knowledge, nothing like that, just turn lanes and turn movements was.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, thank you.
And I want to thank staff and Nick's office as well and the mayor for working collaboratively with us. This is a great step forward.
Chairman. Pardon the question, but it's kind of a statement. I know the project is huge. There are a number of us that have spent. Some of the things that have bothered this commissioner relate to developers that I don't know anything about. Developers within Rutherford County that we know a lot about. On what we think is in the long term best interest of. Best interest of Rutherford County citizens. Quite impressed with what they're doing. I'd like to. Patients that they're, that they have. Not as often as we should or we would want to. What is in the best interest of the citizens. Regardless of what we do going. What I've experienced as a planning process, I don't think I've ever experienced before. But I also know that the build out probably will go beyond my lifespan. And I think that plan that they're putting together is is once again. Growth predictions in. Staff for working with them, department for working with them and for the developers. What they've done and how they've listened and how they've responded to the needs of What they say they're going to do, they. Other comments?
Doug, did you, were you going to follow up on the traffic studies? I guess that's, that was the question that I had. You said you weren't going to get into all the ins and outs of it at the time. Are you ready to do that now or?
Well, I think that's kind of what the applicant was just doing. So, yeah, I mean, if you have other questions, of course, but.
You agree to everything that was presented?
Well, as the, you know, Jamie and Brick had said, you know, we've met several times on this, been back and forth several times on this. I think we have a a foundation for a framework that we could look at for future projects. Now, I don't know if that's been really finalized at this point. You know, there are still some tweaks. This is a learning process for everybody when it comes to this kind of thing. So, but that being said, you know, their original figures that they had presented to us, we looked at, we talked with our traffic consultant about, had a lot of discussion there. We brought what we thought was a better methodology, if you will, back to them and they accepted that. So they have been, you know, responsive, they have been working with us on those things. But like I said, there's, we're still kind of in the infancy of getting this development agreement together, whatever you want to call it, participation agreement. So, you know, there is still work that that needs to be done regardless of what happens here today. It may be that you, like Jamie even said, this is a lot of information to throw at the planning commission right here today. You might want some time to digest some of this and maybe after you look at it, you may have additional questions. It is possible to defer action on this for up to 60 days. Based on state law, you are allowed to do that. So that is an option if you're comfortable moving forward, that's an option as well. But with that, I don't know if anybody, you know, Mike or Nick or anybody had any other further comments on this, but that's, that's kind of where we are as staff.
Right. I just want to be painfully clear. This is a monumental shift on the way things are going to be done. So this is a, you know, a new concept. The county is going to have to come up with funds to help pay for these improvements. So, and there needs to be an agreement established through our legal department, the county commission, and and the development community. So we need to make sure this is done right. And I'm sorry if I'm trying to oversimplify it, but this is, this is new. We need to make sure that we're doing this right. And I'm not saying it's a bad thing, it's, it's just different. We've never done this before. And we just need to be careful of what we're doing.
Mistress, do you want to? Something from legal, any kind of statement there or where they are?
That input, but Mike, you're talking about offsite, correct? Offsite.
Any, any cost sharing? So the county is going to be on the hook for several, three of these intersections. A portion of those improvements will have to be funded by the county.
Talking about offsite.
Yes, sir.
Offsite only.
Yes, sir. They've identified the three intersections that need improvements.
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Hughes, does that also, I'm sure you're looking at drainage quite close on this? Is there anything? I don't want to expand the scope where we're improving everything that may be outside of the scope of this development, but is there anything that's glaring to you that downstream could be impacted? I'm just trying to think of things, not only just the road improvements. I know that'll improve the drainage as well and and go along with the grading portion of of that roadway widening or whatever takes place. But is there anything that you can think of with this size of development that needs to be at least talked about, reviewed or or something?
Right. And that, a lot of that will come with the construction plan development. So Panther Creek originates on this property and we had them extend the FEMA flood study down to the terminus of this creek. But also during the plan development of construction plans, we're going to want to look at the contributing watershed. I mean, we, we believe that where it originates on this property is a spring. So water's coming in from somewhere else and we need to make sure we know where that is. And I don't have any doubt that we can accomplish that, it's just going to come later. The improvement up here on Panther Creek at this intersection, Panther Creek and Midland, like Jamie and Brick said, there's a stream that comes very close to that and crosses under Midland Road. That'll, most likely, the box culvert will need to be expanded as part of this intersection improvement. So that's something that we'll have to agree on when we get the final numbers together, the final designs together. But all in all, they've done a, a great job. They've addressed, I believe, all of our comments for the preliminary plan phase. And they've done a, a great job with working with us, not pressuring us to move ahead. They did everything we asked them to do. And I feel confident they will continue to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question as far as the arrangements with the county and with developer. How long would an agreement take? And that may be a question Nick will have to answer. How long would an agreement like that take to come up?
I think that, you know, within the next month, we could, we could put something together. But at the very least, we were required to do so within 60 days, because that's under state law, this is your initial hearing of this. And so we need to make a decision within 60 days, no more, unless there's voluntary agreement to extend that. So I think that I could start working with Mr. Murphy on actually putting pen to paper. There's a couple tweaks to their proposal that they have submitted that he mentioned. There's some numbers that have to be shifted to align with what the staff and them have talked about last week. And assuming that we can get it ready by next month, it could be presented as a package deal along with the application. If there's a little bit more time needed, we can bring it back the the month after. But I think the aim would be to start working on it between whatever happens here today and and next month.
And and I have another question. Would this need to go through the county commission because there is a funding aspect of it?
I think probably so, yeah, because there is funds being exchanged. And so board of commissioners approval would be required of the participation agreement.
That, that would take longer than the time that we have to, to vote this up or down without them agreeing to extend it, correct?
I think what the law requires is that this body make a recommendation or a decision. Now, once the, the agreement is put together and if this body votes it up, it would be contingent upon board of commissioners approval of the agreement.
Are, are you aware of any surrounding counties or that, that have this type of agreement with developers?
They do exist.
I'm sorry?
They do exist, yes, sir.
So there were, may I, may I continue or is that? Make sure I have the floor before I start getting going.
Make sure I have the floor before I get going here. There were a few things that were said during the presentation that stood out to me that I wrote down, one of which I'm extremely happy to hear the developer say, "We want to help." That was their quote, "We want to help." From my time on the county road board to today, one of the things that has been a constant complaint from people in the rural parts of our county are that these developments and neighborhoods are going in and increasing traffic on county roads that aren't made for that amount of traffic. They were just gravel roads. There were dirt paths that turned into gravel roads, that turned into paved roads. And with those, you know, the landowner maintained ownership all the way to the center line. And as our county has continued to develop, the roads haven't kept up with a lot of that demand, which was made, kind of that point was driven in by, I think it was Jamie from SEC that said that, I think it was that his, the quote said, that the intersections in this area are public health and safety issues. And I agree 100%. And eventually, those things are going to have to be addressed. This is certainly speeding that process up. But what causes me the greatest concern is, well, they've expressed an interest in help of increasing those right-of-ways at those intersections. But there's a lot of road between this development and those intersections, all the way to the highways, where people are going to be traveling to get to town, to get to work, to get to school. And those roads that we have out here in this particular area are narrow and they have no shoulders. So, they drop straight into the ditch. And if we put 600 houses out here, I have to imagine that there'll be some teenage drivers here. There'll be plenty of adults on their phones trying to communicate with work and stuff as they're driving their kids to school and they go off that road a little bit and then they overcorrect and end up in the ditches. I've stopped my own personal car on my road to get, help a family get out of their car that was upside down in a creek. Like, and they just lost control on a road that wasn't meant for a large amount of traffic. So, I have a lot of concern. They're setting aside money for intersections, but if we want to improve the roads to handle this and make this drive safe for these people in this area, that's going to require acquiring even more right-of-way and making even more road improvements. And who is that going to fall upon? Because the highway department doesn't have money set aside for buying right-of-way and building new roads. They're just charged with maintaining what we already have. So, those are some of the concerns that I have for this development. I'm very appreciative of the developer's proactiveness in wanting to set up this agreement. But it's hard for me to vote to approve something, to use an agreement that doesn't exist. And so, at minimum, I would like for us to delay this so that Nick can work with the developers to formalize this agreement. But I'm concerned that that's not going to have enough time to get through all the commission work and things. I guess I don't understand, maybe I need clarification on how that might work, like where we approve this, but it doesn't get approved necessarily?
Well, I think what Nick was saying was that, you know, I mean, first of all, your statement, let's break it down here, you know, your recommendation to possibly defer action on here to give us a better, just to give us a little more time to actually come up with a better, you know, more defined framework for the improvements. Okay, that's the first part of it. Now, after the framework is brought back to you and it's, let's just say, finished form and everybody says, "Okay, yes, this is fine." I think what the discussion was is there's still an element of, okay, if this has to go through the planning, or I'm sorry, the county commission process for their approval, what something you could do was approve of the preliminary plan subject to that agreement being executed by the county commission. In the event that doesn't happen, like you said, that agreement is no longer a thing, then that's one of the, you know, as we always make, whenever we make recommendations for approval and things, especially for Platts and plans, when you make approvals for those, you'll say approval with subject to all staff comments. That becomes one of the staff comments, is that this agreement be executed and that it, like you said, it exists. So, if that doesn't happen, then one of the staff comments that you subjected the approval to when you approved the plan is no longer happening. So, at that point, this development can't move forward until something else is worked out. Does that help at all?
Yeah, I think that does for me, that that definitely helps. I worry, I guess, I don't know if I said this or not, but the developers pointed out that they can't make people sell their land and we, the county, can't make them sell their land either. We can take it, you know, condemn it and take it. And I guess I'm wrestling with, do we, like, this development can happen by right without rezoning, but we can, as they pointed out, public health and safety issues can deny this if we don't think that we're set up to handle it, correct?
Well, there are grounds for those kind of issues if you don't feel they meet the county requirements, correct?
Because I wrestle with, like, do we condemn people's property to make improvements that are needed for the safety of the development? Well, we wouldn't need to make those condemnations if the development wasn't there.
And I would like to point out.
That they need to be made now. I mean, I've even given you some points as to, I think that we need to make improvements to our roads now, but it doesn't sit well with me to take people's land in order to allow another landowner to exercise their right to develop their land. So, that's my internal struggle.
Sure. And I understand where you're coming from. Something I do want to point out, though, when it comes to these equitable shares, and I'm looking at that last page, that C, well, I guess that's the last page, yeah, C 2.1, when it talks about the local agency equitable share project, equitable share and it has the breakdown there. I think something we talked about amongst the various things we had on this is that the local agency equitable share doesn't necessarily mean it's all going to come from the county. There could be another development out in this area. We're not aware of any, but they could come along and say, "Okay, we're also going to be contributing to this intersection, to the traffic issues that are there." They may have a part to play in some of that. So, I don't think it necessarily means that the county ultimately is going to be responsible for all of that, that there may be some other, there may be some other sources out there. So, just be aware of that.
Is that something, because I don't think, it's also not right that this developer would have to make all the improvements and then, once they've made the improvements, the next farm can develop and they don't have to contribute anything. So, is there a way, Nick, in setting up this type of agreement where future developments that use these same intersections would, I guess, maybe pay the county back for the?
I can look into that.
I know some places we do development. Better. Okay, I know a lot of these places will do special assessment districts where the county could always get paid back for what they put in or. I can talk about it way better than I can.
No, the city has that with sewer assessment districts and I'm not sure if they had road assessment districts, but, I mean, it's, like Nick said, it's not a brand-new concept. It's just that we don't have a concept in place, that we don't have the actual agreement.
Therein lies the problem. For the first time, I've been at a meeting, we've got someone here that's trying to think outside the box, trying to address infrastructure, possibly be able to tag along with what he's mentioning in terms of, we used to call it eighth construction in the construction business. If we came out and ran a five-mile line, owner A would pay for a certain portion and then get refunded back as people started tapping into that line. For the first time, I'm hearing somebody say, "I want to help the county move us out of where we're at." This is in our area, when you talk about Rockville Impact, Rockville Schools, and I have no doubt, as we continue to grow, we're going to need more schools than what Rockville's got today. I'm in favor of having a plan in place. I've had to go out and get utility easements where folks own the center line of the road. And here's what you run into. If you don't want to give me an easement, then I got to go work with the highway department and tell them I need to get the line down by the highway. And that's sometimes pretty challenging for the highway department because, like you say, it stops right at the ditch line. Sometimes, Windrow Road was a key example where they just run a new water line for several thousand feet. I get why they did what they had to do. But on the other hand, as we continue to grow this county and we have folks to move into this county with different ideas about what the county should look like, answer will be no rather than yes. They don't want, they won't want to give it up. The developers can't condemn it. So, it puts it back on the authority of having jurisdiction to condemn. We have to face, if we're going to grow this county, intersections have got to be improved, roads have got to be improved. And we're, I'm hearing for the first time, some real possibility here. So, I'm kind of excited about this. I could go either way, approve it with staff recommendations of getting this approved or I can defer for 60 days. I'm open to whatever the pleasure is and I'm not making that a motion today. But guys, we're hearing stuff we hadn't heard since I've been sitting in any of these meetings.
Excuse me, on page C 2.1 on the cost sharing, is there a total amount yet for the county's responsibility? Now, some small print, I can't really.
Well, this includes a good first estimate, but there are several other items that we were kind of brainstorming about, you know, there's going to have to be appraiser fees, there're going to have to be attorney fees, legal descriptions for the right-of-way, survey work. We're going to have to hire an engineer to design the plans and do the bid package. We're going to have to have people to, you know, be over the project. So, that's why I'm saying this is a monumental shift. This is several things. There's going to have to be geotechnical engineering involved because you're widening the roads. We need to make sure the roads are built correctly. You know, just on top of just the construction costs that they've presented here, there are several other costs that needs to be figured out. But I think if we come up with a percentage, an agreement format, some kind of framework, I mean, this can be, can be done. It's just something that we've never done before. And I'm sorry to sound like a broken record, but that's.
On the off-site projects?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir. A lot of these, where they're talking about the prorata equitable share estimates, you know, it gives Barfield at Midland, Panther Creek at Midland, Walnut Grove and Midland Road. So, those are the off-site intersections that they want us to help fund and help make improvements on.
Is there any kind of, I'm thinking about, you know, what are we going to take to budget? We just can't take an estimate. Is there any estimation or?
That's an unknown. That's an unknown. So, they've got a percentage of share. So, I mean, we could base it on, well, we agree on the percentage of share and whatever the final cost ends up being with all these other items that we haven't included in here, that's what we could agree on. It's like, well, the local agency will pay 48% and the development team will pay 52%. And then, whatever that cost ends up to be, we just split it that way.
But right, as of right now, we don't have that cost.
We don't have that cost, yes, sir. We have a good estimate.
But what's the estimate?
I think, Jamie, is it all at $1 million? Oh, that's onsite, okay. They've got, the developer's off-site portion is around $340,000, is that correct? Yeah. So, you know, that's a good first guess estimate, but there's other.
Right.
Pieces that'll increase that.
So, on this estimate, the developer's estimated cost on the off-site is $340,000?
I believe that's just construction, right? That's not engineering, that's not right-of-way acquisition? So, yeah, I don't believe it includes everything.
Okay, so that's construction. So, the county's part would be just a little bit less on construction?
Yes, right.
Plus whatever the engineering or?
Right, appraisals, you know, land costs and things like that, so.
Okay, my last question. Do we know when we can have more farm numbers?
That would, we would have to rely on the development team to help us with that.
Let me ask Jamie, come back up here and he might can give you some of that.
The numbers that we have gotten, I'm showing on here, like I said, are preliminary, nothing's surveyed, so it's all kind of, but we sent it to a contractor. He got his costs, we got volumes and square footage of everything. They give us a price. And so, we put it in all our intersections and that's what you see here, the one through 14 or whatever. Well, the top three, I think, on that bottom page is all that the county is associated with, which is the $340,000. That small portion there. So, he's going to spend, if you take out all the stuff Mike's talking about and you're just using everything to be consistently, he's, the developer's already spending, you know, over a million dollars on the improvements all around the site. And even the stuff that's on the corners, he's fixing that. At some of the intersections that's not touching his property, he's fixing those too because we could fix what's in those right-of-ways. Where we're showing, where we can't, is like, Michael keeps bringing up too, is we don't have the right-of-way to fix these improvements. So, that's what you're seeing. But everything tangible in there is cost, contractors built it, but not like Mike talked about, the engineering, legal cost, stuff like that.
There's other associated costs and these are today's costs. So, 10 years from now, it's going to be much higher, so.
But what we broke down, though, is what Mike was saying is it's an even percentage. So, if it went up $100,000, it didn't matter, it's still 52, 48 or whatever that percentage. The county's going to pay.
And would the off-site projects be done through time or would it be done front-end?
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, Mike, if Mike tells me it's got to be with Section 1 construction plans, then we do it with Section 1 construction plans. You know, I think we look at.
Yeah, we might have to do some fine tuning on when these are actually needed. Is it five years? Is it a number of lots? The Southern Harmony Development, they have a trigger. When it gets to 500 lots, we have to make some additional improvements. So, there's certain triggers that with each development will have.
And so, this cost may not be just one budget year. It could be over the course of two, three, four or five.
It could be, yes, sir. Especially because, like you said, it's 700-something acres. If we develop the first section, let's say it's on the north side or in the middle of the development, let's say, well, then you're, you know, that's what Mike and I are going to look at, what turn lanes are associated with this and what need to be done with this first section, second section and so on, so.
Right. And it depends on where the development occurs. You know, you have some lots on Panther Creek, you have some lots on Midland, so it just depends on, you know, where that traffic's coming from and, yeah.
But we would like to request if y'all could approve the preliminary plat tonight, today, tomorrow and then move forward on the developer's agreement subsequently following after that, if any way possible. We would like to go ahead and get at least the plat approved so we can move forward with that and. Any other questions before I sit down? Thank you.
Mistress, you've walked into modern-day Rutherford County. Have never had this brought before a planning commission before. Think about it. Always had to look at water lines. Back here in the corner, has always had to answer those questions for us, where the water's coming from. This development right now has a brand-new water line out there.
This development right now has a brand-new water line out there, what, 16-inch? Is that correct? Brand-new 16-inch water line going all the way to the other side of it with a new pumping station, right to the other side of this development. Water's not the concern. Or explain to you what they're going to do as far as the sewer is concerned, that's not a concern. Now, you're looking at modern Rutherford County. What do we do with traffic? Brought a solution to that, I guess. Caught in the middle is who pays for it, and where it goes, and this sort of thing. I have the feeling that we have created something, we're going to be continuing. Wanting to fix it, we wish to fix it, but are we ready to fix it? This is just a commissioner that's been sitting here for almost 12 years and have heard these things. I was sitting here a while ago, looking back there, and I see Mayor Birch is sitting back there. I used to watch him up here, and I'd sit down here. It's sort of odd with me looking back there and seeing Mayor Birch is back there, and I'm sitting up here. But back those 12 years when I first sat up here, that wasn't a concern, but now it is. And, you know, we sort of like that dog chasing the car. Got it. Got to decide what in the world do we do with it? So, I mean, got a lot of figures right here in front of us, so you, we got to make that decision, what in the world we're doing with it, and you may want to look at them a little bit longer, and what you want to do with them. That's the decision, what there, and how do we pass it on, what do we do there? I'm chairman, I'm not supposed to tell you what to do, and I'm not telling you what to do, but I'm just telling you, this is a start. This is, we've had a developer to come forward and make a suggestion. Developers have we had to come forward and make a suggestion? I mean, I've seen sitting from here. Chairman down here has said, "This is going to go beyond our lifetime." No, we're not sitting in that same position we're sitting in. We're seeing a lot of things in this county, we're seeing going beyond our lifetime. Every decision from now on that we make here is going to go beyond a lot of them. So it's up to you to have to decide what you want to do here today.
Everwater?
Thank you, Commissioner. We've had an awful lot of people discussing this, I know staff's worked hard, worked hard, the developers worked hard, and some members of this committee have worked hard on this thing. Sounds like Commissioner Phillips has developed a good comfort level, and he's kind of the senior member of this board, and we appreciate his input. I don't see a lot of reason to continue for us to talk about this. This is revolutionary, something that I think that we can use in the future for shaping our laws, and until we step forward and actually try it, I don't think we'll ever know, and this kind of sets a new standard. And I want to make a motion to move forward, subject to staff comments, which includes the illegal agreement that you were speaking of. So I want to make a motion to approve this and just move forward with it.
Have a second for the discussion.
Does staff, what does staff comments mean also taking it to budget?
I think it would include whatever process is determined needs to be gone through for the developer agreement. That's fair.
And I've worked in multiple states and jurisdictions, and this can work. This is a great start, and this agreement that we're trying to develop, I think it's a very good idea, and I think it's going to help us through the future and be something that we'll, I think we'll lean on moving forward. As far as the approval today, I'm in support of that too, but this property did not have to go through a rezoning, so it's able to be developed by right the way it sits.
That's correct.
Okay, so just want to make sure of that. So really, the biggest component is the agreement, and we want to do our best to give them enough time to get that right for the county and the developer.
Correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
I could just follow up on what Commissioner Gooch mentioned a minute ago. Final plat cannot be approved unless all staff comments have been met. That includes the financial arrangements and approval through the county commission, is that correct?
I mean, before it even gets to final plat, it'll have to go through what you were talking about, the participation agreement, whatever process that is, but also the construction plans and all that, so, I mean, there's a whole lot of steps before it gets to final plat.
So we'll see this again with everything in place for, we'll get to see this one more time with everything in place, it's like...
Not if you approve it today, you won't. If you approve it today as the preliminary plan with staff comments, that one of that being the whole process for the participation agreement, that's the last time you'll see the preliminary plan. Now, staff, will see it, you know, just going through the process with the developer agreement, the county commission, whatever ends up happening with that, they may see that part of it, the participation agreement, but as far as like the construction plans and things like that, that's all staff review. The next time you would see anything on this would be final plat stage, when they're getting ready to record lots.
Who will be in charge of, that the agreement is, who determines that it's satisfactory?
Well, that would be, that'd be staff working with the county attorney's office, and then, again, ultimately, whatever that approval process is, if it's county commission, they would be the ones to make that determination, I think.
So a yes vote today is that we're in favor of what this neighborhood plan plat looks like, and that we're in favor of some sort of an agreement for off-site improvements are going to be made and approved by our legal counsel and the planning department and the county commission.
Correct.
Is everyone clear? Secretary Callro.
Jim Everwater? Excuse me. Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Lee Bogal?
Yes.
Charlotte P.?
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Moving now down to item B, submitted for final plat approval. Item one, Woodruff Cove subdivision, section 4, 252002, 30 lots on 8.24 acres, zoned to PUD, located along Shelbyville Pike, US 231, Mankin Point LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission back in January of 2019. This final plat is consistent with that plan approval. This is also the final section of the Woodruff Cove development. Most of our comments have addressed, anything remaining really is what I would call just housekeeping, little tweaks here and there, but it seems like it's in really good order. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners? Question, questions? Yes, sir.
Abstain from this vote.
I don't, I didn't...
Got it flipped up, hopefully, is it working?
Now you are.
Okay. I need to abstain from this vote on this item.
Staff have, staff recommends approval?
Yes, sir, with staff comments as always.
Move to approve with staff comments, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, further discussion. Call the roll.
Jim Everwater? Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Lee Bogal?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason, sorry, Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Carries. Moving now to item two, East Fork Landing Subdivision, section two, phase one, 252003, 19 lots, one common area on 13.4.6, zoned RM, located along Betty Ford Road, D-Square Partnership is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved at the planning commission's March 22, 2021 meeting. Once again, this final plat does appear to be consistent with that plan approval. Most of our comments have been addressed. Anything that's outstanding at this point, looks like they needed to add some minimum floor elevations to match those from the construction plans. We'll make sure that's done prior to this plat being recorded, but that's a pretty easy fix. With that, again, this plat appears to be in good order, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Comments? Motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion to approve. Have a second. Second, further discussion. Call the roll.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Lee Bogal?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving to item three, Walnut Grove Reserve Subdivision, 252004, 72 lots on 51.03 acres, 67 buildable lots, zoned RM, located along Walnut Grove Road, LGI Homes Tennessee, LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission in April of 2022. I'm going to sound like a broken record, but yes, this final plat does appear to be consistent with the preliminary plan approval as well. Most of our comments have been addressed. There's a handful of comments that, again, we'll double-check, that are addressed prior to the plat being recorded. These are things like adding pad elevations, pipe labels, and inward elevations, things like that, just to make sure that they are meeting our regulations and everything, but beyond that, the plat does appear to be in good order, and again, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners? Questions or a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Move to approve, have a second. Have a second. Call the roll.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Lee Bogal?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving now into section C, submitted for site plan approval. Item one is Clear Ridge Gas Station reapproval, 253001, construction of 3,240 square feet of space for gas station on 2.24 acres, zoned CS, located along Highway 99. Krishnan Patel is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. This site plan probably looks familiar to most of you on the commission. This was approved originally back in September of 2020, and then reapproved again in January of 2023. Construction never has started after either of those approvals, so once again, the site plan has expired, so they are bringing it back for a reapproval. Most of the comments, really, we looked it over just to make sure that everything was addressed. There are a few tweaks that need to be made, for the most part. Nothing really has changed from the last couple times we've looked at this. I will point out, and Mike, it looks like he's got that on the screen there, I know when we first talked about this, there was some discussion about extending that turn lane a little bit to access the entrance into the particular, or to the proposed development, excuse me, and they are showing that that has been done, just wanted to make sure that was pointed out, but beyond that, again, the site plan appears to be in good order. Any tweaks, we'll make sure get handled before final approval, so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners? Questions?
Approve with staff comments.
Motion to move to approve. Second. Have a second. Further discussion. Call the roll.
Jim Everwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Lee Bogal?
Yes.
Excuse me, Charlotte P.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, Christiana Market, 253005, construction of 1,600 square feet of retail space and a 4,800 square foot convenience store on 2.35 acres, zoned CS, located along Shelbyville Pike, US 231, Unimmy Partners LLC is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The subject property was rezoned to commercial services by the Board of Commissioners back in November of 2022. This site plan was submitted for staff review soon afterward. It has not been to the planning commission prior to that time, just because of the fact that there were some required traffic improvements that TDOT was going to mandate on this project, so really, the time has been spent trying to kind of work through all those improvements. The big thing is there's going to be a signal at this particular intersection at Christiana Road and Shelbyville Pike. There are still several outstanding comments here, most of them, I'd like, again, would, I would probably say are more on the housekeeping side, just making sure that the plan gets updated, consistent with county approval. Of course, they'll have to make sure the plan meets all state requirements as well, considering that these are both state routes, and also the fact that there is going to be traffic improvements in this area. I know there's been a lot of discussions going back and forth with the state on this with TDOT, so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions, but we feel the site plan is ready to move forward.
Commissioners? Questions, comments, or...
Move to approve it based on including staff comments.
Motion to approve. Have a second. Second, further comments. Call the roll.
Jim Everwater?
Jeff Phillips?
Lee Bogal?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Staff reports and other business, Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. I don't have anything specific, I will just give a quick update on Plan Rutherford. We're hoping to get a call set up with our consultant team here in the very near future to start, well, to continue moving that process forward. Don't have any specific updates at this point, but just let you know that it's not falling off our radar, it's still there, and that we know that there's still more to be done, but we are working toward our next work session and everything, so that's pretty much all I had. Mike, did you have anything?
All right, any other business? If not, we adjourn.